Fraser, Michigan, meeting. Would all of you please stand and we'll do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thinking that there's no one here, we will skip the formal statement. But I will ask Cindy, can you have a roll call for attendance, please?
Board member Burley.
Here.
Board member Chmenti. Chair Farina.
Here.
Board member Goodell. Board member Lessig.
Here.
Board member Menendez.
Here.
All right, approval of the agenda for November 2nd. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Okay.
I would like to... Item number seven, the public hearing. I'd like to postpone that.
I would just, once you get to that, you can postpone it.
Okay.
So I would just leave it on the agenda as is, and then once that comes...
What about the removal of the reappointment for Mr. Lessig?
You can remove that from the agenda, and I would also recommend removing...
Now?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Just due to the number of people that are here.
Okay.
Present, and I would also recommend removing 9A, just because I think it was just a repeat of what actually, what the, what the public hearing was set for, is that right?
Actually, we don't need to remove Mr. Lessig because he's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I am.
Yes, he is, 9B.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item nine, A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, approval of the minutes of the October 5th. Cindy, I gave you one correction. Okay, I was absent that day. And it was excused, so... Any other corrections?
I don't even see you on here.
That's the point. He's not under absent.
It's because I forgot to put him under absent. Good catch.
The only thing?
Yes, I'll second that.
Well, you didn't make a motion.
I didn't make a motion, no. You're making a motion?
I will. I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended for the October 5th, 2023 zoning board of appeals meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are going to foreclose the, forego the formal statement because there is no one in the audience tonight. Okay, next item up is public hearing of Sidney Fraser, ZBA 23-05, variance request by Monticello Company Limited Liability Corporation. The applicant is not here, so I'll entertain a motion to postpone.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. We are on to driveway expansion discussion. Do we want to wait for the board and postpone this? For the other two members of the board to be present?
So, since this is...
We postponed it last time.
Yeah, we, yeah, so since this is just a discussion item, we wouldn't be able to have an official ZBA interpretation at this meeting anyway. The other option, and Ms. Erickson, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it, you could also make a recommendation for Planning Commission to look into this issue as well.
Well, when we're done with our discussion, that will be probably our course is to recommend something to the planning. Ms. Menendez.
Weren't we waiting on some other cities that have ordinances too, so maybe be more prudent just to postpone it until those become available, so we could look at it prior to getting our packet?
Yeah.
Address those questions?
And I will say that Ms. Tomich, who obviously was here last month and was kind of doing the bulk of the research on this, she spent an extensive amount of time looking for similar ordinances at the board's request. She found maybe two that have specific driveway specifications. That was going to be part of kind of my discussion with the board this evening, is if, you know, there's something that the board would like us to look at to narrow our scope, to expand our scope in terms of research. I know that the one that we found was Dearborn. That focuses on driveways that are on different sized lots, they kind of base it on the lot size. I know I wasn't here last time, but I did watch the video from the last meeting, and I saw that that was kind of part of the discussion of what if someone has a one acre lot? Is that going to be the same requirements as someone that has, you know, a hundred foot lot? So, to be honest with you, there is not a lot out there. My guess is probably the ordinances have not caught up to the times of households with four cars plus. Maybe it's, you know, just kind of part of the, back in the day, so to speak, of you have a one to two car household, which is obviously not the case now. So, like Ms. Sayer said, I mean, we can postpone discussion entirely to next month, and if there's something in the meantime that you would like our office to do, I'd be happy to look into it. If there's a specific direction you'd like us to go, or, you know, if the board would like to make a recommendation to Planning Commission to possibly review the ordinance, that's also another option, but should there be an official interpretation of the zoning board, we would have to put that on an agenda as an interpretation, not just discussion, so.
I personally would prefer to postpone. Then again, back to my same point as last time, we've got a sector of people that can add on with really pretty much no restrictions, you know?
That's with the RVs, right?
RVs, trailers, boats, I mean, they can, they can run from one end all the way into the rear yard. And as long as you're off the side yard, there's really no restriction.
Is that something, is that something that you would like our office to look into? Perhaps if there's another community that focuses, or I guess maybe looks at the conflict between the two, maybe, or?
I have no problem with recreational vehicles and stuff because I think that's prudent for them. My thing of it is, is that I don't think it's fair to exclude a homeowner and say you can't put an extra slab right here, yet I can big, you know, big massive drivable thing back it in my yard, drop cement, and that's okay. But if I have, you know, children still at home and I need that extra space, I don't have that. That is my problem, there's disparity there.
I have a different lot. I, like you, think it ought to be based on coverage of the lot. And I'd like something looked at for that. Because I've seen lots that have like 70% coverage, and they're clearly creating water trespass on other people's lots.
That's problematic.
And it is only going to get worse because we keep, we as a nation and world keep paving over more and more of what absorbs that water. So, you see retention ponds now, you see in some, in the Northeast, you have to build a retention pond on your property to hold your rainwater until it dissipates into your land. And it's very expensive, so I think it would be prudent for us to look at that. Mr. Burley.
Can I ask why this is coming up right now?
Essentially, planning, the planning department day to day gets a lot of calls from residents wanting to expand their driveway, and there's been some discourse and kind of interpretation of the ordinance and application. And so, planning wanted to bring it forward to try to get a clearer position on it for when applicants call.
Well, expanding, I mean, expanding a driveway is, I think, different, you know, adding two feet or four feet to a side because you don't, you don't want to get in the snow, and paving your front yard.
I guess the issue is that the ordinance doesn't kind of set that, that limit on where that is.
Well, there is a limit on how much surface area, right, per lot?
Lot coverage currently does not include paved areas, only building footprint.
Well, maybe that would be your answer.
So I think, I think that's where the tie into lot coverage is coming from.
So, as of right now, crushed concrete would actually be a porous service. And actually, they do make porous concrete now, that you can get rainwater to go through, so.
Aver stones are porous.
Right. Okay.
All right, is there, anyone wanting to make a motion to postpone this?
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second?
To our next meeting, but we don't know when that's going to be, next meeting. Right?
Did I give you enough time, Alyssa?
I guess, just for clarification sake, what exactly is the board looking for me to bring back? More focusing on the impervious surface maximum coverage? Okay, and then the recreational vehicles, kind of see if there's anything that meshes the driveway expansions and allowing someone to still have RV vehicles?
I don't know about allowing, but including, is there anything that governs in any other areas do, other, other cities or other govern that? And include that in calculations? And Lauren, you can do the same with McKenna, look throughout McKenna.
We allow them, we allow the recreational, but we've never controlled the surface other than it had to be a hard surface, you couldn't have it on grass. That's, that's never been the problem. The problem what we're running into, it I think set this all off, is people wanting to expand their driveways and them looking at the ordinance where it says you cannot expand your pavement. Now, everybody's looking around their neighborhood and they see half the neighborhood is expanded, they want to go do it now, and they're told, they're told they can't because of the way the, the ordinance is being read now. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that's kind of what happened on that one. Which brings us back to the, still kind of the same thing. Because you, you can't put a recreational vehicle down unless you have a...
You're not supposed to.
Correct.
Okay. All right, moving on, item...
You didn't vote on the postpone.
I'm sorry, I thought we did. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second?
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
I thought I, I thought it, yes, I seconded.
I didn't say aye, but aye is unanimous.
Okay.
All right, variance on 31471 Utica Road. The applicant has not shown up, so I'll entertain a motion to postpone.
Mr. Farina, that whole section was actually removed from the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's a different kind of meeting today.
All right, the October monthly report?
The only items that have changed from the last report are the variance for the front parking came back to Planning Commission last night, and they did get conditional approval. And the only other item, new item, would be this variant, the sign variance that we've postponed.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Farina, I had something.
Yes.
The one with the fence, hold on, let me put these glasses on. On gross spec, he's on here twice. But the one said he still needed approval, and he already had it. The ZBA 2204. Pending PC approval for the fence design. On ZBA 2203, wasn't that approved? Because they're kind of like one in the same. That's the one next to the Mexican restaurant, am I correct?
Yes.
So, I guess my question is, should that, the ZBA 22-04 be approved? Because it was my understanding it was approved.
It wasn't approved by Planning Commission?
I, I was under the impression it was.
No, it was, yes, it was.
Okay, so then that just needs to be corrected to approved.
Okay, I can do that, all right, thank you.
This needs to be removed.
In this one for SB 23-03, 32260 Utica?
Yes.
Setback reduction granted for October 5th. Is there any note on here that their site plan has to be approved?
Their, so their site plan was the one that was approved last night?
Okay.
Yep, conditionally, so they have to come back with a couple additional materials, but it was conditionally approved.
Okay, and like Mr. Farina said before, that was never stamped by the ZBA for zoning? So somehow that has to be stamped, correct? Along with the plannings and for files, am I correct?
We, we have definitely had this discussion before. The plans that I received last night were the 11 and a half by 17, and I think Chair Zarnicky chose not to stamp those. It's my understanding they were going to make a few changes to it and perhaps bring that back. I'm open to clarification on how that's supposed to work.
I guess I will look into it, I do not know.
Because it was always my understanding that Mr. Steimek would always stamp them with his ZBA, he had a ZBA...
None would write any conditions on there.
Correct.
Yes.
Would this be on like the site plan?
It would be on one, it was on one set of the plans.
On the preliminary.
Correct.
And one would stay with City Hall, it would go...
And one would go to the applicant.
Correct.
My, my understanding, and maybe this is different when they need a variance, from talking to Chair Zarnicky, was that she would come in to stamp the final site plans when they met all the conditions, not at Planning Commission?
Yes, that's, that's what she said last night, yes. But the ZBA one that we did, it was, it's got to also be stamped, so when we look back, it can be looked at as a variance that was granted.
But could we not stamp the same one?
Oh, yes.
They had to make the corrections, but nonetheless, I mean, some way the ZBA had, that it should be stamped.
Right.
By the ZBA, and do we know where that stamp is?
I think it's in the drawer back there, I'm hoping.
Because I, we got, we got planning.
You got planning up here.
Yeah, I know, it is. But we had the ZBA up here before. Okay. All righty, anything else on the monthly report?
And Smokey Joe's, I understand, was ticketed?
I believe, last I spoke to the building manager, which was Monday, he said that he was ready to issue enforcement, and he was just confirming with the attorney that everything was in order to issue it.
So Alyssa, you're up.
So is it, is it or isn't it?
Unfortunately, I do not have a specific update for the board this evening. I do know that it's under review by Mr. Genault. So I do know that Mr. Genault is aware and looking at things, so.
So do you think we'll have something by our next meeting?
I'm sure, yes.
Then I'll have to take that as it hasn't been issued yet. Right.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
All right, next item is Planning Commission liaison, and that is me. We talked about what happened last night, the, the appeal that you guys granted for the meeting while I was on vacation. The site plan was looked at. We asked them to make a couple of minor changes, and the, two was to require a walkway from the public walkway to the entrance by striping the, a place for people to walk in the pavement, it's not a big deal. And from the back, there is a handicapped area, and from the, the back to the doorway also. So, they have agreed to do that, and the chairman asked that a bike rack, bike rack be put up in, on the site plan also, and they are doing that, so. We did waive the requirement to have landscaping, because there is no, it's all paved. There is no landscaping there. And they said they may take down the fence between the lots, which would also make it prettier, because that's his brother that owns the lot next to them, so.
He owns, sells?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's pretty much the happenings. Mr. Kyle and I were recommended for reappointment to the Planning Commission. It goes to the, is it going to be on this month's agenda?
It is, we got it on the agenda for next Thursday.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I need to talk to you because, okay. All right, any questions about what happened at Planning Commission? Oh, I guess the biggest thing we did was we, we continued to review the sign ordinance, and it was, I thought it was very interesting, we were going over lighted signs, and Lauren went through it, and a number of items came up that we are concerned about, and that is the intensity of the light, how often can that sign blink on and off, you know? And then I've been thinking about it at home, and how big should the letters be so that people aren't really, you know, not paying attention to their driving? So, those are some of the questions we're hassling with. And next month, Lauren, I'm sorry I don't have that piece here, we will be reviewing the next portion of the sign ordinance, which is...
Off the top of my head, I believe enforcement's part of it.
They were never able to find the one from back in 2007 because that one had the timing on the, the speed. It had a language on the flashing, and it had language on the size as well.
I have, I have requested that before from McKenna. They took my copy, your predecessor, not your predecessor, but the person you're filling in to, predecessor, took my copy, and was supposed to return it, and has never done that.
Is that Mr. Urbil?
Yes. Could you ask that, ask him, please?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think you're right, we did have...
There was, I distinctly remember, if I can't to, what I'll try to do is go through my plethora of old papers and see if maybe I've got a copy of that, because I remember seeing it.
Is that the ordinance itself, or minutes?
It was, it was, it was a, kind of like what they're doing now.
It was a draft of the ordinance that we sent to city council that they never enacted.
And was that when Hockeyland put their lighted sign up, is that when that all, or was that prior? I remember that conversation.
It was prior to that.
We may have something on our system, you can look.
That would be grand.
You said it was 2007?
Because it goes back to the, around there, because Vintage House was the first lighted one, moving one, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, we were talking about that.
And it was built around that, so that was like 2007.
Okay.
I'm guessing.
So can I ask a question, just for my, because I noticed the other day at Hockeyland that it was flashing quite a bit, and I just wondered, I, that was actually going to be a question, is there a time limit? Because...
There's supposed to be.
As I was driving, and it's, it wasn't an aesthetic thing, it was that it was, it was distracting.
Yes.
And that was the, the thing that even in my rearview mirror, it was, it was almost like, is there an ambulance behind here?
Right.
So I just wondered if there was a, because it went on for an extended period of time.
There, there is a time.
Yeah, it shouldn't be flashing, and it should only change every 30 seconds.
It was flashing.
According to current ordinance.
Yeah.
Could you talk to the building department about that, please?
Yeah.
And I will check and see if I can dig up something in my...
And if you remember the ZBA meeting date, I have all the minutes from like 1990 to 2010.
No, I don't, because they were under review, and we got the copy, and then it was supposed to go to council after that, so.
If you come up with a date of...
Okay, appreciate it.
I happen to have all the...
You want to look through all of them?
I can, they're all on Laserfish, it's all on DVD. It's on my, it's on my other laptop, actually. So, if I can help, and I have all the minute meetings on DVD as well.
All right.
I don't have a, I don't have ZBA, I'm sorry. Didn't, I didn't put all those on DVD.
All right. Public to be heard, since there's no public to be heard, I'll bring it back up to the board. What was that? Anything that you want to say?
Hockeyland, are we, I, I know there were some things they were looking into on the conditional occupancy and some things that had to be done.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't mention that. They wrote a legal opinion, did you get, it came to my email.
Yeah, I sent it to all the ZBA members and the Planning Commission, and I believe Mr. Genault forwarded it to the city council.
And I...
When?
Monday, last Monday? Was it last Monday?
I had all your stuff.
Yeah.
I have it right here, if you'd like it.
I just want to know what it, what it came under, like how I missed it.
I can tell you the subject line, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Listen, my phone's been acting weird, it put all my emails in a VIP box.
Oh.
Yeah, all by itself.
It was October 30th?
Yep, Monday, October 30th.
Legal memorandum.
What is, what it, who's the name coming from?
From me, Alyssa Erickson, yeah.
There you go, there's two of them in here from you.
That is correct, yeah, so I sent, yeah, I sent the exhibits separately, they were pretty large documents, so.
Just the, the exhibit won't print?
It won't print?
No.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, I apologize, the gist of it, where are we at on it?
Oh, man, the gist, the gist of an eight page memo.
Okay, can you, can you sum it up, just?
Cliff notes.
Cliff notes is basically, Cliff notes is basically, there's really nothing for the ZBA to do action wise. Planning Commission, Planning Commission did recommend, or excuse me, Planning Commission did alter the site plan conditions back in October, removing the shared parking agreement with specific entities, not shared parking in general. There's still shared parking required for the former Lions Club parcel, and then also the Big Boy, obviously, so they can share parking. In reviewing everything, we did notice that obviously the special approval land use conditions mirrored the site plan approval conditions with the same condition requiring for specific entities. So the representatives from Hockeyland and Big Boy have been informed of that. So should they wish to operate the Big Boy as a fast food restaurant, which is what requires the Saloo, they would have to either get those agreements, or they would have to amend it, which would require a public hearing, things of that nature. So, as of right now, no...
You don't need this, they have to decide if they want the special land use, is that what?
They have special land use, they have to decide basically if they're going to operate it in accordance with those conditions, or if they're going to seek a modification to those conditions, or perhaps they're, you know, not going to use the, the restaurant as a fast food, I don't know. But that, all the information in terms of what was outstanding and the requirement to either amend it or operate it as is, was, was told to the representatives, and I have not heard anything back. So, no certificate of occupancy has been issued, would not be issued until obviously they're in compliance with everything had to tell.
Did they ever present an updated plan, their standard operational plan?
From back from...
Or they planned for an extreme event, because the one that they submitted in 19...
I, I think, yeah, I think honestly it's case by case. I think it's whenever they actually have an extreme event, that's what's provided to the city. Obviously, the 2019 meeting, I think, happened before I was even sworn in as a lawyer, so I, I'm trying to put the minutes and everything together.
Have you seen the email that I sent to Don?
I did, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Because when I was, when I saw this, I'm thinking, I hope they don't follow this, because the numbers aren't even...
Correct, and I think that that, and I think that that was provided following site plan and Saloo... SELU approval at planning and planning perhaps set a different number, I think, than what ZBA then changed for the variance. I think it was originally 2300 for an extreme event. And then when they came before ZBA, that was changed to 1575. So, I think it was more so just a, maybe a showing of good faith or something to show this is what we're doing for our game plan, so.
And how about the hold harmless?
Hold harmless, yes. I mean, obviously, yes.
Okay.
Just go through quickly. The applicant must provide a 60-day advance notice, remain as is. The applicant agrees to comply with plan for extreme events and all additional requirements imposed by the development review team, remain as is. The applicant agrees to employ adequate city public safety personnel, remain as is. The applicant must adhere to the north parking lot improvement, remain as is. This is the legal, I'm reading. Agreement for easements and cross-access shared parking for Hockeyland parcels, including the north parking lot and the, and the Fraser Hockeyland property, LLC properties, including the outlaw parcel, proposed as part of this development application in the northern vacant lot. That was the change that was there.
When you're referring to remain as is, are you just saying that nothing was changed on that original site?
Correct.
Correct. And the change, the change in the provision that, or in the condition that Mr. Farina just mentioned, part of what the change, the recommended change was with, from our office was that at the time that the site plan was originally approved, they didn't own that Lions Club parcel.
Right.
So, to make the record clear and to kind of describe better what's actually happening now on the site is where that change came in for that, for that condition.
And the application must give city 60 days advance notice. That's there. All agreements and site plans must be reviewed and approved by the applicant, remain as is. The applicant achieves 100% fire protection safety approval, remain as is. Retail operations may only be conducted between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM, remain as is. All of the conditions remained as is except for the shared parking agreement with the Lions Club and Myers Corporation. And that is all.
With that new hockey team, is that going to be, put them over the?
Motor City?
Put them over the extreme event?
I do not know.
That's for them to decide. They're going to have to notify the city regardless.
Okay.
Anything over 1575.
Now, when you say that, here's my question all the time, because like, who, who do they see? Like, when they're going to have a, do they go to building?
It's my.
Do they go to the city manager? Should we not have something in writing that there's an agreement between the two that says here, on this thing, this is who you go see?
When it was originally set up, it's my memory, recall, there was three persons on the panel. The building department head, the city manager, and head of public safety.
That's my understanding, too.
But do we have that in writing so though, that they know who the players are and if things change hand the way that they've changed here, that whomever's coming in knows that as well?
I mean, I don't know if we have it specifically denoting who these specific people are. I mean, they could change from the city, too. I mean.
Right.
So, but I, I think that obviously the conditions are the conditions and they're going to have to notify the city. And if they don't notify the city, whether that's one person or five people on a panel, I mean, we have the notification requirement, so.
Okay. Is there anything other business that you guys want to discuss this evening? So, for then, Mr. Burley, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing for me. Nope.
Cynthia?
Just wanted to mention last night at the Planning Commission, we did discuss the fact that our training looks at this point like we may wait until we see what new members we're going to have. We will have one new member for sure on planning and perhaps, yes. So, we're going to, we're looking at January at this point, I think, so.
I did have one more question.
Okay. Here.
Do we know what the situation is with Mr. Goodell? If, if this is just.
Is this a one-time deal or?
Well, no, this is actually a second, so I don't know if.
So, I, I. He just wasn't available this evening.
Wasn't available, okay.
Okay. Alyssa, do you have anything, ma'am?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Lauren?
Nothing for me, me either.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I will accept that motion, sir.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned at 7:40.